Jason Briscoe. Dan Sherrill.
President.
Oh, missed Joe. Johnny Savage.
President.
Dan Robert.
President.
Rick Griffin.
President.
Dana Taylor.
President.
Wayne Howell.
President.
All right, we have the minutes from the last council meeting.
You should also have the special, well, you've got the October 2nd earlier and then the October 29th special call should be there in front of you.
Make a motion and we approve both sets of minutes as presented.
Second. Motion on the second set of the minutes is presented, all in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. Harbor reports, any departments have anything for us? Pardon? Anybody have any questions for the department here? We'll have some discussion on health insurance here in a little bit and other things. Committee reports, Community Fire, Services and Welfare.
I forgot, it's not presented, Councilman, this is October. Staples. If you can talk to John afterwards. That's all I have here.
Finance Committee.
No report there.
Internal Affairs. Public Safety.
No report there.
Public Works and Transportation.
No report there.
Resources and Policy.
Ours will be next up in agenda.
What is the resolution? We have discussion on the ordinance preventing loud and unnecessary noise prohibiting engine braking. I know you guys took that up at committee meeting.
It was dropped.
I understand that. After that committee meeting and the comments were laid about complaints from the trucking companies about going forward, I contacted Mike McDutt at DSI and some people at FedEx and Mike McDutt sent me a message back and said they had no problem with it at all. So I just wanted to pass that along to you and see if you thought there might be a reason to take that up if the trucking industry doesn't have a problem with it here in town and the residents do. I don't know why it's an issue. I was going up to the lake to get my vote two weeks ago and most sides of Bergman has a no exhaust brakes sign on each side of town.
I'll bring back, ready?
Yeah.
The other two?
We've got three complaints in four years. Is it in one local area? I mean, three complaints in four years, maybe a little more than that.
That's what I'm saying, isn't it?
I bring.
It's up to majority.
Your attention because I thought, you know, the comment was made that the trucking industry was against it and they, it's the citizens that ask for it. Choose to listen to them, that's fine. Jackson Annexation Ordinance.
This is eligible to be put on its first reading.
I make a motion that we place this ordinance on its first reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion on the second place this ordinance on its first reading by title only, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
An ordinance annexing the hear and after described lands to the territory of the city of Harrison, Boone County, Arkansas. County is still in the process of approving, should be approved in a couple of days, so we need to at least wait till the next week to consider second and third readings.
That's all I have here. All right. Old Business, Houston Home Runs. As you're aware, we, Public Works got up there and did a fine job of knocking that building down about, probably about six hours. They had some assistance from a local contractor. It's on the ground, nobody can be hurt by something falling on them at this point. The hospital has asked to proceed to try to find a cheap way to get rid of the debris. And Kim and Jim Sprout were in my office and we called the ADQ Director and he agreed that it could stay on the ground temporarily as long as we provided for control of runoff, which Public Works got up there and did that day before it rained. So they are working diligently, I trust, to get somebody to get some reasonable means to haul that off, so. So that's where we're at on that. We spent very little money and very little time in knocking it to the ground and at least making it to where people can get inside and get hurt. Questions about that? You can ask Jim or Kim. They're working with several contractors trying to figure out the cheapest way to get rid of it. But we're making progress, a lot further than we were four years ago.
We did a few security patrol patrols to make sure that nobody messes around.
The police department, I'm sure, are running extra patrols in the area. It is posted, but that doesn't mean there's not going to be somebody following on or doing something with it, so.
That's my only problem, there's a safety issue if we get road patrols and stuff, I think we're all right.
In either old business or new business, we have a levy village to approve.
Yes, sir. It's just a resolution. This would be our annual resolution to affirm the desire for the states to continue assessing the tax millages for the city of Harrison.
I make a motion that this resolution approval.
Second.
Motion on the second to approve the resolution for the renewal of the tax mileage, all in favor? I oppose. New Business, 2015 City Budget Discussion.
This is more of a, more of a deal to say we need to start working on it. We have gotten some numbers. Obviously, the main concern is the general fund. First budget is about $230,000 deficit. That's just first present. We need to take it to a budget committee and we need to do that sooner rather than later. We will have things that are going to be affecting it. One of the things that isn't in that $230,000 deficit number is the health insurance. I will be, see if I can go into that now at the odd one. I said I can run it all, I'm going to go up here because this is going to take a while. All right, so, because I'm sure you all are aware, health insurance is going up. We did get a notice from the current health insurance that our rates would go up by at least 34% if we are going to keep the same benefits, same insurance. That comes at a, an extra $300,000 to the city, which we all know can't happen. So we had them give us other quotes. Obviously, one way to lower rates is by increasing the deductible. Another is to increase your out-of-pocket. We also got it quoted again from municipally. That has not been the employees' choice in the past because with that you pay the, or excuse me, a copay along with the extra 20% co-insurance that usually does not come with a normal insurance's plan. Usually your primary care physician will charge you a copay and if they can do everything there in the office, that's all you pay. However, with municipal, you pay your $20 copay and you pay 20% of whatever it costs you. They also, ER is still 250, urgent care 75, specialists are 50, that's the copay. With municipally, all of the copays are $20 except for the emergency room and that's 250. Again, though, you still pay that 20% co-insurance. Municipally quoted $500 deductible, a $1,200 deductible and a $2,000 deductible. All those came back higher than what we have now. With municipally, you have two rates. You have a single rate and you have a family rate. With United Healthcare, you have a single rate, a single plus one and a family rate. That single plus one comes as a savings to the employees that have either a spouse or a child. It also comes as a savings to the city because we don't have to then pay that extra 68% that would be on top of that. We probably need to have a decision made on this by next week, which means we probably are going to need a specially called council meeting because if we don't decide, it basically reverts us back to the same plan that we have, which again is going to cost us an extra $300,000. If you all are willing to do that, please let me know because then no actual reaction we needed. However, obviously, this is going to fall over into next year's budget as well. It's going to affect that and again with the $230,000 deficit, original budget, just adding more onto that is going to be problematic.
Does that, does that $230,000, does that include anything for employees?
It would include a 3% raise.
And what is that 3% total of?
That 30, that, yeah, just to shade under 30,000 for the general fund. Now, other funds that will affect other items. For the general fund, which I know everybody is very concerned about, it is about $30,000 for a 3% toll raise to those general fund employees.
And mind you, with just a 3% raise for those employees in the general fund, any increase in the employee portion of the insurance cost or any increase in the deductibles or copays or anything else is actually a cut in their wages. They're cutting their benefits, you're cutting their wages, so it's a very thing to be in there.
Yeah, our loss ratio was 140% so far this year. It's never good, but they also lumped us in together with a bigger medium-sized group and just all the fees that have been added into it this year, along with, they have a cost of living adjustment also for theirs. Everything in total, it's skyrocketing and it's not just us. County's got, county's got the same problem. I heard theirs went up 25%.
Yeah, it took our insurance premiums from right now around $700,000 to almost a million dollars. Basically, that 140% of, we paid almost $700,000 to bring in this year and they paid out a million plus. That's the reason for the increase.
It'll be going, the city will go from $745,000 to a billion and 17 if we stick with the same plan. I did put some other proposed plans in there for you, some other higher deductibles, obviously higher out-of-pocket max and also the enrollment for the single, the plus one plus family along with the cost of the, to the city down below. I urge you to consider that when they're making our decisions. There is another plan also that's called a consortium. We are not even sure if we're going to be able to even get into that, but that would be a partially self-funded plan if we would decide to go with that. It raises our rates about $20,000 a year, but if we have a good year, we would get money back. Again, we aren't even sure that we can get that program, so we didn't want to present it to you because it might not be relevant.
If you raise an out-of-pocket max on an employee of $4,000 bill, that's about $350 a month. If an employee would have to have that out-of-pocket max, have some health problems and pay that out-of-pocket max, had to be $350 a month that that employee would have to take out of this number. A lot of our employees, you know where they're at, they can't afford that kind of hit.
Has a vanity thought given to perhaps an ordinance to get us over the first of the year in view of the fact that you've got 75% of this council is going to be different January 1st?
We have to have open enrollment by the first week. So we have to have open enrollment for insurance by the first week of December.
I know, but I'm talking about the overall budget. We can pass enough, appropriate enough money to get us over the first of the year and let the new council make the decision on this insurance and everything else because they're going to have to deal with it. You're saying keep the same insurance till after the first year. I'm sure in the budget.
I'll pass a budget with half a million dollar deficit and nothing left for the new council to worry about.
Yeah.
But I'm thinking of the new council, they've got a terrific load on day one. And they're going to have to live with it, that's for sure.
These, these figures here, they do not have just the percent that the city's paying towards the policy.
Down at the bottom, it shows the cost, the monthly cost to the city. I just have the employee portion on there just to show what the employee would have to pay per month, but the overall cost to the city per month is the low, the bottom there.
Is this per month or per paycheck?
Which one? On the employee side? It's per month. Per month?
Right now, our total cost is $46,000, well, $47,000.
That's what the city pays.
And looking at keeping the same policy, which municipal league is going to jump up $15,000 a month.
And you have higher out-of-pocket max, if that is what you want to do.
If you increase the employee portion or the out-of-pocket expense or anything that increase the cost to the employee, one of the reasons we are able to keep our employees at the pay scale that they're at and on a long-term basis is the benefits we provide. If you cut those benefits at all, it gives them an incentive to look elsewhere.
Unfortunately, it didn't come very good news, it's just news at this point. But we do need to have a decision, like I said, probably made by next, if we can, all special council meetings next Thursday to make this decision. And if you all have questions in the meantime, please give me a call or if you want to sit down and meet with me one-on-one, that's fine too, because I'll give you whatever information I have.
Do you have a recommendation?
I hate to speak for the entire city. Unfortunately, I have the job of trying to look out for my employees at the same time trying to look out for a city budget and it's, it can't be done at this moment. You know, I've tried to come up with different ways. I've even thought about going with the higher deductible, but the city kicking in an extra, you know, amount just to help the employees out that use it. If they use that deductible, maybe the city can kick in an amount to help them out. Again, at that point, I'd have to defer to that's even legal, I don't know. I'm just trying to think outside the box here to figure out a way that we can come up with at least something that we're not just, you know, killing our employees with but at the same time it's going to be feasible for the city.
Legal or ethical, I'm paying the portion of the employee's deductible. I don't know which way it would be improper, but you know, you're in a situation where you have one employee that pays $4,000 out-of-pocket, so we're going to kick in for them and another employee that doesn't pay any out-of-pocket, so he doesn't get anything. So how does that make it fair towards those employees?
I will tell you that 27 out of the 314 employees that we have hit their deductible this year of $500. That's a little under 10%. Eight of those 27 hit their out-of-pocket max of $2,000. So you're not talking a ton of people, but at the same time, those eight people, you're just, you're saying, hey, you've got to, you're basically telling them either go look for a job or you've got to do something else to get more money.
And those eight people, most of the eight people were long-term loyal employees.
Yes. They're long-term and, and I'm not going to tell you that those are going to wait, going to go away because I don't think they will. I mean, I don't think the expenses are going to go away.
Well, this probably is not unique to the city of Harrison.
No.
Everybody else has got the same problem.
No, not at all. It's nationwide at this point in time. There's new fees this year that are going to be 5% to 10%. Now, you won't, they won't go up 5% to 10% every year, but it's new fees that are hitting us this year and probably couldn't have came at a worse time for us, but it's there and we got to do it. Again, the 140% loss ratio isn't helping, but.
We fully expected an increase, perhaps not 34%.
I was hoping, you know, 10% to 15% and when they said 36%, I got keeled over, but so we had to deal with it, so I can't change their mind. We did ask Blue Cross Blue Shield to bid it, they were extremely high. All choice was to the same vote, even, you know, they weren't quite as high as the Blue Cross Blue Shield, but they were pretty high.
Any company that looks at wants your current losses and then they're going to base the premium on trying to make money off of those current losses.
Right. And since I've been here, I don't know that our premiums have ever paid for, for usage. So the last three times we've had it quoted, our loss ratio is higher than 100% and so we're, we're spending more than what we're putting in. I think our best year was with the municipal league, but part of that was employees didn't want to go using municipal league insurance because they're afraid they're going to have to pay more. Another was it just happened to be a somewhat decent year that we didn't have high claims. Well, I probably didn't answer your question of a recommendation, George, but again, I hate to speak for all the employees. Boy, I've had some in my department say, yeah, we want a lower deductible, but I've also said, you know, are you going to pay the extra $300 that it takes a month that it takes to keep that same insurance? And they're like, oh, no. And then we have others that say, well, we'd rather have the higher deductible, so we pay less. It also comes down into, you know, your older employees are going to want a lower deductible, your younger employees are going to want a higher deductible. It's just the nature of, you know, it's what you're going to run into anywhere you go. Obviously, if you don't go to the hospital or you don't go to the doctor very much, you won't find a deductible because you don't think you're ever going to use it. You got a low deductible, sometimes you got people running to the hospital that usually even though they don't need to, but then you're also helping out some of your older employees that might have to go more often.
Regardless to schedule the open enrollment, we need a decision on this and we would probably schedule a special council meeting at your convenience.
Well, I hate to push the envelope, but you know, we've got to be able to tell these insurance companies that they can start open enrollment around the 1st of December.
We won't have insurance.
Yeah, we won't have insurance until January 1st. You can't, you can't really do that, especially now, they're fine yet for it, so.
Is everybody happy with a current injury? Well, you're never really happy with everybody.
I haven't heard as many complaints. I don't hear very many complaints now.
Not likely this way.
No, and the municipal league, the biggest complaint on that was their dental envision and since we've switched dental vision, I couldn't tell you if it could get better or not. Like I said, the biggest complaint I hear about their health insurance is, A, they're slow to pay, so some of our doctors here in town don't like to use them and some of them refuse to. And B, you have to pay the copay plus that co-insurance. So your trip to the doctor might turn in, instead of having a $25 copay, you're paying $150 just to go ahead and tell you you've got a sore throat. Hopefully, if you're using that, you've got a sore throat, hopefully you can do a little home remedy or whatever you need to do, but hopefully you're not running out every time you have to call to go to the doctor.
What's your percentage of employees that have, that have our insurance?
We've got 132 enrolled out of about 150.
Just facing everything every other business is facing with medical today, with health insurance and medical costs and we don't have the advantage of being able to raise prices to cover it or have anywhere else cover it.
I will tell you, one recommendation I will have is if you decide to increase that deductible, that we look at something for the employees that are acting to use that because again, those eight people that had to pay that $2,000 out-of-pocket, they're going to be paying 6,600 if you have a high deductible, so. Part of this fall of 4,000 in the year. And again, some of those are going to be recurring, that they've got to pay that every year. I don't know about you, but I don't have four green land around every year to put somewhere. And that's just if it's a single, if something were happening to a family, the out-of-pocket's 13,600 or, no, 13,200.
Well, Thursday's a good night next week, doesn't travel, doesn't. I would suggest probably we get together with that, that particular item only on Monday.
It's everybody's pleasure, we can schedule a special meeting for Thursday, 6:30?
I need to have that, I wish we could do it next week because there isn't a big one in town that Thursday night that a lot of people like to attend. That's the sugar possum circle friends. I'm on. Anything? Monday?
Monday.
Monday, okay, we can, what time I can do that?
6:30?
6:30?
Okay, that is very quick, so if you all have questions, when can you do it with me tomorrow? Monday?
Or Monday during the day?
Yes. Monday during the day or tomorrow. You can even call my cell phone all weekend, I don't care, just, I need to get this thing discussed, so.
Monday is?
All right. Now.
Yeah, next.
Budget. We've kind of discussed a little bit, but we do need to have council members that are staying on, new council members coming in. We would like your input, but we at least need to start talking about it. I don't know if we can set up a budget committee meeting at some point in time, the preliminary budget, well, again, I can't really get you preliminary numbers until we know health insurance numbers, but I can at least let you know what we've got now. Yeah, I've got that already set up and I can email it to you, I can print it out, but we do need to start talking about that as soon as we can. Some of you don't want to, but too bad. We need to have something going forward, obviously, and we have to have it passed by January 31st, so any, anything we can do going forward would help in that process. Again, if we can set up a time, that would be great. I'm not saying you have to do it next week or the lead after, but I would like to do it sometime maybe towards the beginning of December, if we can at least meet about it and talk about it. And that can be just finance committee or budget committee, I don't care, and it can be during the day, it can be whenever you need to meet, I don't, it doesn't really matter, I just, we need to discuss it and kind of show you what's, what we've got so far, especially with the new police and fire funds that have been set up now. You all need to at least see that because it's going to be a different financial statement than you've seen so far. And for some of you, new financial statements.
If you don't commit to a schedule, it's never going to happen.
I think a lot of it would be based on what, what we do about insurance. It's going to be a big thing in the budget.
It will be.
The one you gave me, that change, right?
Again, it all depends on what's gonna end up happening with health insurance, so...
It's almost apparent to me that we've got to be looking at cutting something. And it'd be interesting to see what the people out there, what they should do without. The money is not there.
Looking at some things to cut, there's not a whole lot there just from a standpoint. I've looked it over. Obviously, we've tried to cut things in the past. We've done a successful job of that. Ain't get what out of turn. No one was telling. Is there a few things maybe we can think of to do? Yeah, but it's gonna take some creative thinking. It's not gonna just be, hey, you've gotta cut yourself 10 percent because honestly, I don't know that we can in some departments. The cut across the board is not feasible in certain departments. It's just not.
Not unless they start putting laws now or quit something on the roads or...
Those kind of things.
Yep.
I mean, everybody wants to see that 10 percent. Well, we gotta figure out something. Kinda got the next one on the list, too. But employee differentiation plan. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look it over. All the information we gave you last time. I don't have a problem putting that off for a little bit longer. Your, it's your all's pleasure. I didn't really have anybody come ask me any questions about it, but I don't know what your thoughts were between Edward Jones and Arkansas Diamonds. And Arkansas Diamonds, we got some low fees on it. And Edward Jones is more built-in fees than anything, but it's local, so... Anybody have any questions? Anybody use it as sleeping material?
I got it, everybody.
At least at any point in time, you know, there's not much cost in the city. That's just a benefit that we're trying to provide to some of our employees.
For no cost.
Yeah.
But the insurance goes up as much as we think it's going to. Probably nobody, they're too interested in it.
Some of them, maybe not. But again, if there's not a cost, you might as well offer it to everyone.
Yeah, I think we should offer it, but if anybody would be interested, or anybody have the money to get it after the insurance goes up, that's gonna be the question. And I think we should offer it.
Sure.
I think you need feedback from the employees who handle the department now, so... I've had them tell me they wanted an idea of which way they wanna go.
As far as which one? A lot of them say less fees, but...
Our loan on that was two tons of vinyl.
Well, I'm back to the health. You can pass the sale, I think you will. I have to help. I got back to the health. Retirement.
Well, I'd like to do that offer to the employees. I really do. 'Cause there's no cost whatsoever to the city. It will be somewhat of a benefit, too. At least with industry, of course.
I think on one, there might have been like...
Hundred.
Yeah, it's not much.
And maybe they said it'd weigh the two people.
Yeah, there might be a little bit of an illustration cost, but we're talking maybe a thousand dollars in total. I mean, it's nothing that's gonna wreck our budget by any means, but, you know, if we can offer them something for a thousand dollars, it'll be worth it, I would think.
Well, it's something the employee himself or herself's gonna make a decision whether or not.
Correct.
And I'm real serious about people getting 401s retirement systems. And if we don't give them the opportunity to do it when we have an opportunity like this, we're not giving the employees everything that we should give them if we don't offer it.
I understand that there is a retirement system in place working for the city. However, if for any reason more than would choose to leave, they can take this with them. And, you know, currently, I think the statistic out was 40-year-olds have saved $20,000 for retirement. And I don't know how many people can live off $20,000 for 20-plus years of retirement.
Well, and we all know, on the average, when you retire, you retire much like a Medicare patient. If they got a plan like this to back up what you get, there's just gonna be a system.
Right. I think that's all I had. But please, come see me if you have questions. If you have the answer, also please come see me, 'cause I'd like to know.
All right. Let's, Fire Department, long proposal?
Ian, Fire Department is asking for the council to consider allowing us to borrow money against the public safety tax to buy two new engines. We don't have any data on the engines. We really can't take a step forward yet. We've looked at some. We've got a sheet about some of the price. We're looking at about $400,000, $420,000 an engine. It's at $800,000, $840,000. Talked to some local lending institutes here in town. We're looking at high 2.5, maybe low 3 percent interest rate at this time. Borrowing in town, if that's the way we go. There's a lot of logistics in there about buying a drop for an engine, whether we buy it from the company and look at the formula. If we buy it from the company, that we can finance through them. If they can beat what we can get locally and finance locally and then get a discount through them. So, it's just a matter of math. We'll come down to some figures to see what would be the best deal for Harrison. I just hope, before we can move forward and get into any logistics or any hard paperwork approval from council to borrow the money against the tax is what we're asking. Or maybe a four-year.
Do we have any prep work done? Let's reapprove of borrowed money?
Well, that's kinda the first step. I've talked to the bank, so I've kinda got an interest rate. They can kinda, depends on when we get the trucks. We've got two trucks that we have available that we could maybe get that are coming off the line of Pierce. And our truck company hasn't, committee hasn't really set on those, but they would be the most, the soonest the trucks that we could get would be the end of January off of, or beginning of February out of Pierce. And so, just, yeah, it's the rest, a lot of work goes into putting a bid together on it. And so, it's kind of just a rough figure, and that's the figure I'm using. Probably with some equipment on there, about $420,000 a truck. So, that's what's involved.
I was gonna say, and this is not saying that we have to. We're just, I think she's looking just for the opportunity to potentially go out and get that loan. A lot of times, I did talk to one bank today, and yes, they will let you borrow the money against that sales tax, but they're not gonna quote you an exact rate until you, I say, yes, you can do it. Because they're not gonna, they're just gonna say, "Well, how do you know that they're not gonna spend the money elsewhere?" That's, I've even had a person tell me that as a bank official. So, you know, if there's no approval, they're not gonna give you a 2.49 or a 2.99 rate. They're just gonna say, "Well, yeah, we'll give you a good rate."
And even the people that think the trucks don't wanna waste their time and the legwork unless they know they're buyers. And if you guys decide we're buyers, what's the point?
It's kinda just the next step to getting into buy the trucks. It's just, it's not that we're gonna go, we don't have the approval to go buy trucks without council's permission. We just need permission that we'll be allowed to borrow the money to buy the trucks. And then when they narrow it down to a truck, we have the exact figures and prices and stuff, then we can bring it to council and give our options that we have then. But it's, really, it's hard to get a lot out without even knowing that we will be allowed to borrow the money at this point.
And could you explain the fire cut breakdown at the Hoops and Home Runs Fire? And what could have happened if they would have been fighting any fire with lives involved, with firemen on the end of the hose?
Yeah, it could have been tragic, absolutely. Whether it be life or property on that. Not only can we have the one truck break down and the metal pumping, and have we been inside, you know, dropping and running and going. Getting our personnel out would be our first priority. And then we have a house that we maybe just got the fire under control. And this is the other circumstance, is that fire's gonna kick back up and start rolling again, grabbing another engine, as Rick knows. We've got supply lines and everything laid all over the roads. It's hard to get that other engine in. And even then, that structure fire that maybe we had saved, we might lose. So, our lives is first priority, right? That could be very dangerous. It just could just quit. And then the second truck that we're trying to replace as well, and we had trouble getting it to engage and pump gear. Took a little bit to several, they're just getting worn out. And so, they're just not reliable like they were. They're dangerous.
They're just 20 to 25 years old.
Right, right.
Are you looking about 50,000 or 60,000?
Um, yep, 800, they were 40,000. It's over a four-year. I think we came up to about $18,000 maybe a month.
It depends on if you do four or five years, obviously.
We're looking at four.
We're looking at $111,000 annually or $9,300 a month. Again, nothing's saying you can't pay it off early, which I think we probably could do, especially with the additional revenue that's coming in. It's nothing saying that you, if you borrow it, you get it quicker. Maybe you can save the wife or two, or however many you can save. And at that point, if you need to pay it off at the end of the year, you pay it off at the end of the year or at the end of two years. But again, it's just not necessarily about the loan as much anymore now. Yes, we would like approval for that, but, you know, bad equipment, you're either gonna have to be repairing it, which is gonna cost you more money also, not just interest, it's gonna cost you repairs, but, you know, it could cost your lives, too, so...
We're looking, yeah, lives and our property as well. And we brought our department, and it's not like how we wanna do business.
How the voters voted for the tax for this purpose?
When are you planning on replacing two more trucks, Mike?
The earliest that we think that we could get them, if we have a truck committee that's looking hard at two Pierce trucks.
No, I mean, if you get two trucks next year, when are you planning on getting two more?
We've got the one new truck, so that would give us three frontline trucks that would be new, and that's what we have. Then we would have one of the C grades we would keep as a backup. And as long as we could keep it, being it's a backup, it's not getting nearly the use of use. And so, we don't, you know, maybe five years down the line, three years, we'd hopefully hang on to that. But it's just our backup truck. We have to have the backup engine for our ISO rating is important, but it's our, we have the one new truck, so just the two would give us three frontline trucks out, and that's what we have, the C and the frontline trucks.
So, we may not look at having by now, from five years?
Um, three to five years, yeah. Which depends on what the C grade, we can get it to manage. Not getting a frontline truck, it's not getting the use or abuse or, you know, maintaining very well. But they're just getting worn out.
What's the plan for replacing the ladder truck?
The ladder truck, we're looking at maybe 10 or 11 years to replace it. It'll be 25 years. It's 25 years old. We'd have to do some, you know, miter maintenance, of course, you know, on every truck we have, but... So, that's what we're looking. We're hoping that that sustains that while we just changed the, we talked about a few months ago, but all the lights, the LED, and bypass that generator and fix it. So, just a couple of things on it. But so far, it's been a good truck, a really good truck.
What's the projected income from the tax?
I'm changing.
That's like you said, a million dollars. With the increase in sales tax we've had this year, I bumped it down a little bit, and it's right at a million dollars.
Luke, what is the motion that we would have to make to take care of this?
As far as to approve going up or bid to get rates?
To get your loan rates and everything.
Down the approval, I don't...
Need to be voted in.
Yeah.
Good, maybe they'll tell me if they have to go through the general fund.
Yeah, we'll go through the general fund at a throughway of the Fire Department, which, again, will change the way you see it budgetarily. But in essence, it is still in the general fund, and it shouldn't either be budgeted. It might be something we have to talk about and approve at the first budget or...
It's not even missed, but...
Correct. It would be one of the 2015 budget.
I thought there was a separate, how the board is able to afford this tax?
It's good.
This shows the debt is against the general fund.
It's, it still rolls into the general fund for audit purposes.
So, you're gonna have to approve the 18, whatever, $18,000, $20,000 a month expense for example, in your budget.
I don't know. Can you do a full budget for future year?
We're not looking at possibly the end of April until January.
That would be the earliest, yeah. It might maybe as much as July or August. Depends on if we could get those two trucks. Very comparable to the truck that we got two years ago. It's a 100-gallon truck, Pierce truck, and we're real happy with that truck. It's a good truck.
So, you're saying July, August, before we can actually?
I'm saying it could be as far or even later. If we were to make the decision that we could borrow the money and council would give us that permission, our truck committee were to decide. Here's the truck company has two on the line right now that are very comparable to the one that we did buy, that we're very happy with. And we could have that, would be as soon as we could get trucks, and that could be as February. If we don't get on those two trucks, which we're not pushing council to, but it may be July, August next year before we could get the trucks off the line somewhere. They happen to have two speaking to the rep online that, again, they're 100-gallon trucks. We would like to go to the 100-gallon trucks, their 1,500-gallon pump per minute trucks, which is very comparable to what we use.
It would require the council approving not only the debt, but also the, say, $20,000 a month payment for the 2015 budget year. You cannot approve that $20,000 a month payment for the 2016, 17, 18, 19 budget year. So, in the event the future council would not approve that for the 2016 budget year, then you would be facing repossession of the trucks in an unprotected city. So, hopefully, nobody in the future would refuse to approve that budget. But you can't tie the hands of future council.
Well, you won't have any money available until March anyway.
payments wouldn't start before that anyway 'cause we wouldn't take delivery problems.
Right, and I did talk to one of the lenders here, and I discussed that with them. And even if we went, of course, it depends on our finance, maybe a quarterly deal, something wouldn't be due till the end of April, March.
Sitting on the desk. Most likely, the first thing would be till April anyways, if you took possession in February. Because they might believe in March, but most likely, you skip a month or it would be late March before. Again, if you're spending $20,000, but giving 80, it's a lot of difference. And if you have to pay all of that, $80,000, millions of that, well, that's definitely...
The projected interest over a four-year period, how much money is going, $1,000,000 or $1,000,000?
It's still a little bit.
$2,600,000.
How much?
$2,600,000.
Over a four-year period? $4,600,000 or $1,600,000?
Yeah, we may get able to get it less than, you know, in the twos or at this point, twos are the lending.
And if you pay it off early, you wouldn't have all the interest.
We get a cut-rate deal since we provide two?
Well, you know, we're working all the way to that. We're trying to, we're trying to work with them on that, yes, absolutely.
You got a lot of holes with no breaks with these?
Um, because of the, what we discussed earlier about the bidding process and what have you, we get that in our budget. We're gonna want to get the trucks. We're giving it some new hose, we're gonna do some of the new MSA packs. As it is, our backup is hefty, we've got 2.2 packs on it.
There again, we'll be making the decisions that are gonna affect the next council. There again, we'll be making the decisions that are going to affect the next council.
First of all, first of the year.
That's you, John.
We've got what, three, four, five new councilmen here tonight, those here.
Three, four, five, four.
That ain't going to hurt if we break them first.
Well, it, it will, when I hear Chief says, right now, we're looking at a window of opportunity to get, these trucks don't come off the line every week, and we've got a window of opportunity here now to get two at the end of January. If we don't get into this window of opportunity we got now, we're probably going to be waiting another six months to have that opportunity.
We wait till January, it's, we're nine, they were nine months out to order a truck offline, it's just that we're using trucks that were, that one just quit on us in the middle of a fire the other night, so we're fortunate again that nobody was on the line with, without any warning of any kind. We're not still sure why it quit, once we jumped it, got it started, the alternator, everything seemed like it was working fine, but something drove that truck down, and it just quit. And that's the 94 rate monitor.
Well, I don't want to run the risk of this happening again, unless, having the very apartment, I say we go ahead and go with it.
Can we do one? Do we have to get two? Do we have to get two?
Um, we could get one, I suspect, and wait on the other, but then again, we have the other truck that didn't want to go into pump gear as well, the 91 truck, and it depends on where the fire's at, which one goes up first and who starts pumping. That was the case here, the new truck stayed in the bag because station one brought the ladder truck because of the commercial building at the Hoops and Home Run building, and so the other two station frontline trucks came out, and those are the two trucks that we're having trouble with.
Well, after all the discussion, there might, some people want to do it, some people have given it hell, and it has to go to the council.
Is there any, uh, much of a written proposal or request, like perhaps you want to do it when you want to do it?
I've got two ready to go.
I think that would be helpful.
Well, we're not, we're just asking for the permission to borrow the money, and so once they can get that, and we can narrow it down in your proposal, is that what you mean exactly dollar amounts? Because we haven't gotten that.
What's your overall plan, yes, and we know what to replace the trucks, we know that, but the timeline is what's critical.
If we tie something up in entity, is that something that you often vote on up and down? Like, like you vote on, on the motion, yes.
You have a motion on the second.
I would make a motion that we allow the mayor and the finance director, the entire team to proceed with this long process to purchase these two vehicles at the end of January.
Second.
Motion on the second, whilst to proceed with the purchase of these two fire trucks at the end of January. All in favor?
Aye.
I vote. Motion carries. That's all I have tonight. Anything other council moves, have anything else? And motion adjourned, if you have anything to say? Got them all enough.